Okay, I'll call the March Watertown School District Board Meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, item 2.1, roll call. Please note, all board members are present. Item 2.2, are there any conflicts of interest this evening that a board member needs to disclose? Hearing none. 2.3, review and approval of the agenda. Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein. Second by Ms. Moulton. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 2.4, we need to approve the minutes of the February 14th and March 1st meetings.
I move approval of the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 2.5, will receive the financial reports for February 2022.
Thank you. In the general fund, received the typical amount of taxes along with the regular state aid payment. State apportionment was received in the amount of $840,910. It should be noted that this payment came in 23% less than anticipated as a result of the reduction in earnings on the investment at the state level. With a 0% interest rate, the generated income and payout to schools was negatively affected. The ending cash position of this fund reflects an increase when compared to the prior two years. The cash balance of $7.4 million in the capital outlay fund consists of 39% left in capital outlay certificates in support of the high school renovation project. This fund's ending cash position reflects an increase of $1.3 million over FY '20 when the certificates are retained from the balance. The revenue significantly exceeded the expenditures for the month of February in the Lake Area Tech Fund. Revenue consisted of state support, of which $1.1 million was in relation to instructor salary support payment. The third quarter state aid payment was also received in the amount of $1.7 million. The ending cash position of this fund is relatively similar to that of the previous year. The premium and administrative costs during the month of February exceeded the claims in Employee Benefit Trust. The ending cash balance of this fund remains at a healthy level to support future liabilities. Activity within the enterprise funds of K-12 Nutrition, Concessions, LATC Food Service, and EduCare operated under the normal activity, with identification that the revenue under the EduCare operation included $78,000 federal payment under the Child Care ARPA Stabilization Grant. The funding is provided as part of the American Rescue Plan and is designed to help stabilize the childcare industry as the state continues to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. To date, EduCare has received $164,569 in funding related to the CARES federal funding allocations. I would be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Glass. I know you're going to give an audit report later in the meeting, but I'll ask you this, because I'm sure you're already thinking about it. Inflation rates at 7.9 presently. It's probably actually much higher if you look at the way we used to calculate it in the 1970s. It's probably much higher, so if you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we've discussed the inflation rate that's currently being proposed and what we're seeing. A few things to note is, within all of our governmental funds, we try to maintain an allocation over 15% within our fund balance. We are over that percentage in all of our funds except Special Education, which we continue to monitor. And that is a federally funded program for the most part, as well as at the state level. But with indication, we've always tried to set our fund balances at 15%. Right now, with the economy and the inflation, I would be more comfortable at an 18% to 20% range. And with that current range, we currently are there within all of our federal or our governmental funds. So that's one way that we'll operate and try to maintain as we see inflation. One of the other big impacts is seen in federal food service. That program is run under USDA federal guidelines, which we've had the free meal operation. Through the free meals, we receive more per meal, so that has helped that fund as well. And as we continue to operate within that fund, they've provided federal funding as well to help accommodate the increases that we'll see specifically to food products. So, thank you. Good question.
Okay, any other questions on the financial report? Hearing none. We'll move to 2.6 and our student staff recognition.
Good evening. I've got some nominees or folks to be recognized tonight. First is a student. Junior Kate Lukin will be performing in the All-State Band, March 24th through the 26th in Brookings at the Performing Arts Center on the campus of SDSU. She was chosen from among the top flutes in the state, so congratulations to Kate. And then we announced our winners for the Classified and Certified Staff Members of the Year at our early dismissal on February 23rd. So, classified folks who were nominated. Joan Van Meter from the high school. She is in the office. Casey Krakowski, head custodian at the middle school. Emma Desher, paraprofessional at the intermediate school. Deb Cox in food service at Jefferson Elementary. Jeannie Burnt, paraprofessional at Lincoln Elementary. Cindy Schoenfeld in food service at McKinley Elementary. Deb Erickson in food service at Mallett Elementary. Judy Curly, paraprofessional at Roosevelt Elementary. Jennifer Glines, paraprofessional at Garfield. And Sue Heideman in technology and Jean Pike in transportation. And this year's winner of the Classified Staff Member of the Year was Casey Krakowski, custodian at Watertown Middle School. For the Certified Staff Members of the Year nominees are Tom Mattingly at the high school, Shanna Stone at Watertown Middle School, Suzie Huth at Watertown Intermediate School, Jim Wright at Jefferson Elementary, Brenda Engels at Lincoln Elementary, Connie Corff at McKinley Elementary, Darla Canas from Mallett Elementary, Andy Ward at Roosevelt Elementary, Bobby Joe Sapir at Garfield. And this year's Certified Staff Member of the Year is Bobby Joe Sapir. She is with the 18- to 21-year-olds at Garfield. Bobby Joe will go into the... Our local winner goes into a regional competition, if you will, for the Regional Teacher of the Year, and that regional winner would go to the state if they are selected. So, congratulations to those folks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 3.1, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area? If not, we'll move to the action items, and first of all, items in personnel. 4.1.1, the retirements.
Yes, ma'am. It's always bittersweet with retirements, but... And we really appreciate and honor these folks as they retire. There's well over 100 years of service that are retiring this year, but we do recommend that you accept the... Approve the retirements as proposed.
Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve retirements.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Lor and second by Mr. Stein. Any comments or questions on retirements? Hearing none. All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. 4.1.2, the resignations.
Yes, ma'am. We recommend your approval of the three resignations as presented.
I move approval of the resignations.
Second, motion by Mr. Stein and a second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments, questions there? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting resignations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.1.3, contract recommendations and addendums.
Yes, ma'am. You have a fairly typical list of recommendations and addendums, including two new personnel that just came on. We recommend your approval of the contract recommendations and addendums.
Can we have a motion to approve those, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts and addendums.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Lor, second by Mr. Stein to approve the contract recommendations and addendums. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Right on the right agenda here. Okay, we'll move on to the items on 4.2, which is property. First of all, four...
Ma'am, we missed the...
No, we're gonna... That's been moved on the...
Okay.
That'll be after our executive session. We'll have that item. So, we will move on to property and 4.2.1, authority to seek bids on the Archway Complex.
Yes, ma'am. The Lake Area Tech requests authority to bid the Archway Complex. The new facility will be funded through state allocation of $7.5 million, pending final signature of the governor of that bill. And the balance will be made through private donations made to the foundation and the IMN Capital Campaign Funds. The estimated project is $16.2 million plus alternates, with projected completion date for the students in the facility by the fall of 2024. However, current economic conditions may impact the cost of the building and the timeline. We recommend your approval to seek bids for the Archway Complex.
I move approval, authority to bid for the Archway Complex.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Iverson. Is there comments or questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor of going out and seeking bids on the Archway Complex, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. 2 point... Or 4.2.2, consider the heavy equipment operator simulator bid.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech recommends your acceptance of the sole bid from CM Labs to purchase the simulators. They cost to be $98,027. We had projected or estimated that at $100,000. This will be funded through HERF3 funds, which are the COVID dollars for the higher education.
I move that we approve this heavy operator simulator bid.
Motion by Mr. Iverson and a second by Ms. Moulton. Comments or questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 4.2.3, consider the robotic floor scrubber bid.
Yes, Lake Area Tech recommends accepting the low bid from Hilliard for the purchase of two robotics floor scrubbers for a total of $130,722. The bid meets all specifications and they are the low bid. The estimated budget for this line item was at $140,000 and again, was through HERF dollars from the federal government.
I move that we accept the bid from Hilliard for the floor scrubbers as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Iverson to accept the robotic floor scrubber bids. Any comments or questions on those? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. And 4.2.4, authority to bid custodial services.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech employed an external custodial service during the pandemic to assist with maintaining a clean and safe campus. Hiring the external custodial service to supplement cleaning by our custodial staff became a key way for our operations as we experienced hiring challenges. We have reached the bid limit threshold under the state procurement standards, and therefore, we request authorization to bid those custodial services.
I move authority to bid custodial services.
Motion by Mr. Iverson and a second by Ms. Moulton to bid custodial services at Lake Area. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, President Carter.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we'll move to the discussion items for 14-4. And first of all, 5.1, is there any public input on agenda or non-agenda items for the K-12 side this evening? Okay, if not, 5.2 is our Northeast Tech High School report. And tonight, we have Mr. Bert Folic here to give us an update on Northeast Tech.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for inviting me to share a little update on Northeast Tech, and so I'm just gonna jump right into it. I think everybody in the room on the screen there understands that we are your technical high school, and the eight schools that belong to our co-op are on the screen there. So, before I dive into a few more details, a lot of thank yous. A lot of people in this room to thank. I appreciate Dr. Danson's support, Mr. Stacy's support. Also, we have high school and middle school administrators that have helped a lot to make a lot of this happen, Dr. Brist and Mr. Ransdru. We have counselors that work a lot with me, and then also Mindy in the counselor's office has been on a great job of helping to allow the students to sign up for all these slots. So, the main focus of tonight's meeting is just gonna walk through some of the... Our registration for next year, which we started here about a month ago. So, you have a document. I gave you two documents. The first one's on the screen, and this document is a little... There's a lot of information there. We're only gonna touch on a part of it. We will touch on more of that at our board meeting on Wednesday. But anyway, I'm gonna... I think my laser pointer will come up on the screen here. So, just to start off then, preliminary numbers for next year. So, the first column are the allotted slots, and you can track those all down, okay, for all the schools. One slot is one block all year long. So, if you scroll on down, you can see all those slots, and then when we get done here, the next pages will... I'll tell you how those slots correlate to course seats. But anyway, we have requested slots, and then we have demand percentage. Well, that's an important number for me, because our schools using their slots in our schools, what are these classes are they signing up for? And we'll talk about that in a second. But anyway, if you look at Summit, that's a good example. So, Summit then, for next year at this point in time, they have 18 slots. They had 18 requests, so their demand percentage is 100%. So, that's real simple. You can obviously see that some of the other schools requested a lot more slots. And then if I just kinda summarize a lot of this then, the demand percentage for the out-of-town schools at this point is a little lower than last year, but still very good. And then if we slide over all the way to occupied slots, though, it's actually a little up from last year, because they had a little more... They had a few more slots for next year. And then somehow, the utilization, okay, is actually the same, which is amazing. So, anyway, now if we focus here on Watertown, if we come on down to the purple box and you see the Watertown numbers there, Watertown demand was way up. And this is very good news. And if you look in comparison, your demand percentage at almost 230% versus 160% from last year, it was way up. And I'll talk about why that is. But anyway, so now, as I go to the next screen, those 431 allotted slots then, if you look to the next screen then, and you can't read that, but I'll... But in front of you, that turns into 1,100 course seats. So then I'm gonna focus in on those little bits. So, the big takeaway right now then, if I zoom in here, over 1,000 Watertown students made over 2,500 course requests. So, that was... That is a... Blew away our numbers from last year. And it should have, from this standpoint. This year, when we allowed students to request a slot or to sign up, we allowed 8th graders through 11th graders to each sign up for four classes. Last year, we didn't let the 8th graders sign up for so much. But I wanted to know that number, because I wanna know what they're demanding, and just so I can be comparing apples to apples all the time. So, anyway, when we're looking at this sheet then, you have course seats allowed. You understand what that is then, so there's 1,100 total if you go all the way to the bottom. Then on roster, we already have some conflicts, so they still count as demand, but those students are out, because they wouldn't work in their schedule. Seats available, there's a few available and some. You know what a waiting list is. Total demand then would be adding up all of those for a total demand, and then you see the demand percentage over there. So, when you're looking at the green ones, that's a demand percentage over 300%. So, that is tremendous. And when you're looking at those then, you know, everybody wants to cook, and so it's a quarter class, so that's a really high percentage, but that's still very good numbers. But then as I... If you're looking at the current demand percentage, and if it's yellow, that means it's either equal to or higher than last year. 24 of the 35 classes are yellow, so that's good news. And then, when I was looking at my notes from previous years, I think four years ago when I was here, I was questioned about some of our ag courses and the demand for those. If you take a look at them right now, well, demand's up. So, that cycle kinda moves around, and so the demand's up there. So, these 20 courses that you see in front of you then, they... All of these courses here should be full next year. The only reason why these classes wouldn't be full next year is if we have last-minute drops. I'll move on to the next slide. And now we have the blue-shaded ones where we... Where the demand's a little bit lower, but still many of them are good and were higher than last year. And then a few courses there that are under 100%. So now, as I keep scrolling then down the page, and we get to the totals then, as I mentioned, 1,100 slots. We have about 1,400 students on a waiting list. We had a demand over 2,500 signed up, and so that you can see that demand percentage. What was a little... What I have never figured out in the past, and what was more surprising to me, would just be looking at the numbers by grade. And so, on the one column here, you have what they... How many signed up? So, 1,007. And then this is the total number of each grade that's listed there for 1,278. So, 75% to 81% for an average of just under 80% signed up for at least one class. That surprised me. Honestly, if 65% signed up, I would take that as a win. So, very good numbers there for demand for your technical high school. So, what does that mean? Well, it means we are doing some things right. It means I do have a strong staff that are, you know, inviting to students and also are teaching skills. They find the classes worthwhile. And it does mean, you know, I could add teachers. Now, that's not on the table. It's not on the cards right now. In the cards right now, but it is a reality that the demand is there that we could expand. So, just some things to keep in mind there. Any questions on those numbers that you've seen? Anything that pop into your minds there?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, obviously increased demand, adding more teachers, you mentioned. Would building more classrooms, larger building, would that...
Yeah, we don't have room. We're... There's no room right now. So, we are filled, and so there is no place to put another teacher, even if we could. The only thing that I could finagle would be somehow in the manufacturing realm, if I could get someone that could be a welding and machining instructor and fit him in there, and then fill up that. That's about the only thing that I can think of, which could be possible, but that's the only thing right now what we could do. Okay, a couple more thoughts then. Our work-based learning continues to grow, and so the job shadowing and field experience has still been hindered a little bit by COVID, but we're hoping to push through all of that. I did want to mention with our student learner program, or the simple name, the internship. Last summer, we had eight, almost all Watertown High School juniors and seniors, sophomores and juniors, I mean, 16, 17-year-olds that were working in manufacturing throughout the summer, attaining more skills. That is still surprises a lot of people, but we've been doing this now for almost 10 years, and it is just... It's a good thing to be doing. Next year, the goal is, every program's gonna have at least one intern, if not more. And so, we're slowly growing that program. We need a steady flow of students, which we pretty much have. We also need coming back down a flow back to us of business partners that can make that work. And so, but we are getting more people asking every week, every month, for sure. All right. One... Another bit of information, construction classes. As of right now, I'll word it this way. I'm 90% sure we will be building a house next year. Final meeting's coming up next week, but right now, it looks like that's gonna happen. So, since we've had a new instructor the last two years, it has been wise not to build a house, but we'll get back to that. And I know the students want it, and it seems to be a good thing for our program. And then finally, as many of you know, Northeast Tech, Lake Area Multi, has turned 50 years old this year. The oldest co-op in the state, the first one that was built back and started in '71. So, Saturday, May 7th, from 10:00 to 2:00, we are having our 50th anniversary celebration. That will be our project day, our student day, our open house. There will be food. There won't be a percentage car show. There'll be an actual car show. Right now, we will have, I think, about 80 cars coming in. We thank Lake Area Tech for allowing those brand-new parking lots to go to use there, and we're bringing in some cars there. And we're gonna recognize current and former instructors and staff. And then, I should add then, of course, to give our big brother, Lake Area Tech, a big thank you for the space that they allow us and the continued cooperation that we have with that institution. It has worked well over the years. So, with that, I am done with my presentation. Any other questions for me?
I do. What's the current age of the building you're in?
It was... We opened in '71, that building. Yep. So, yeah, it is '50. Yep. Going on '51 even, so, I mean... Soon. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. I put a thank you out to Bert, too. He works very well with our high school, and as someone who sits at all the... With the other superintendents, and we all appreciate Bert's work and accommodation. If there's students who want to get into those classes, he makes sure that there's a will, there's a way. So, thanks for that, Bert.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we'll move on to 5.3 and the first reading of policies. First, we have BEDG.
Thank you. This will be the first of three policies that we have for you for first reading, and there was just a change in the state naming of funds from trust and agency to custodial, and that you'll see is the theme as we go through each of them. So, the only change to BEDG minutes is the change from trust and agency to custodial funds.
And then the next item on there was Policy DB, the annual budget.
Yep, and Policy DB, annual budget. Same thing, trust and agency changed to custodial funds.
And then Policy DBC, the budget deadline and schedules.
And under DBC, once again, changing trust and agency to custodial. The only other update there is more of a local decision on the timeline that better reflects the fact that we have our annual budget meeting in April, so we just had the March-April for getting that other budget information in. So, those three up for first readings, they'll be posted, and we'll have them for second readings in April, unless you have questions or thoughts on them.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the action items, and first of all, 6.1, approval of the bills. Could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the bills.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions on bills? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the personnel items and 6.2.1, retirements.
Yes, we have two retirements for you, and we wanna thank them for their service as well.
I move approval of the retirements.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions? Second by Mrs. Laura, any comments or questions on the retirements? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Six-point-two-point-two resignations.
Yes, we have certified, classified in activity positions. And keep in mind, the activity positions are pending suitable replacement.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the resignations?
Move approval of the resignations as presented.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Laura, comments or questions?
I have some. This is always a sad time of year that we say goodbye to personnel, veteran teachers and staff members. So, this is hard, always hard to look at. I'd like to just pause here to mention a serious problem. Retention of teachers, especially at the high school. This spring, we lost three of our five science classroom teachers, three veteran teachers. They'll be difficult to replace, particularly in that critical subject area. In addition, we lost the AP math teacher. Over the last thirteen school terms, the high school has lost twenty-four science teachers and seventeen math teachers. It's absolutely imperative that this spring, we put together plans for reforms for next fall concerning alternative education, class sizes, student handbook rules and some other issues. And I should also mention that behavior problems aren't just endemic at the high school. It's also a K-eight problem as well. We're seeing more of it, so it's across the board that we need to address. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the resignations. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now we have our contract recommendations and addendums, six-point-two-point-three.
Yes, we have some certified and classified positions here as we're trying to fill as well for next year.
Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts and addendums.
Motion by Mrs. Laura.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein, any comments or questions on the contract recommendations and addendums?
One thing I'd just like to point out that that list of contract recommendations and addendums includes the name of Patty McClemmons, who we are recommending to fill the job of Mr. Brandsrud, is retiring as the principal at Watertown High School.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And six-point-two-point-four, a leave of absence.
Yes, we have a leave of absence for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then they have to let us know by March first of twenty-twenty-three their plans of returning.
Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the leave of absence.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Laura, second by Mr. Stein, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now, we'll move to the property items. And first of all, six-point-three-point-one, consider the east parking lot of the high school, the bids we received on those.
Thank you. Five competitive bids were received in relation to the east parking lot repairs of the high school. It is recommended to accept a low bid for asphalt pavement from Dunick Incorporated in the amount of four-hundred-and-forty, four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. The bid meets all specifications. Please note that an alternate bid for concrete was represented at ninety-six thousand above base. Through a forty-year lifespan analysis, the cheaper option remains to accept the asphalt concrete at a total of four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move acceptance of the bid from Dunick for the east parking lot as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Iverson to accept the bid for the east parking lot. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And six-point-three-point-two, consider the copier management agreement.
Thank you. This agreement with A and B Business Solutions is a continuation of our current agreement, which terms July of twenty-twenty-two, to span over an additional five years. The agreement will provide thirty brand-new Toshiba copiers as well as updates to include all offices to have faxing capabilities. In addition, each copier will have the ability to hole punch as well as staple. The agreement will add prepaid color pages to the base in order to reduce the annual overage invoice. A and B has proposed a low, a lower black and white cost per page of point-zero-zero-four-eight as well as a lower color cost per page at point-zero-four. It is recommended that we continue the district's relationship with A and B Business Equipment by, by approving the copy management proposal.
I move that we accept the agreement with A and B Business Solutions.
Motion by Mr. Iverson and a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the copier management agreement. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And six-point-four, we will receive and approve the twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit report.
Thank you. The financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one have been audited by Heidi Bailey and accepted by Legislative Audit. This was the district's first audit provided under the services of Heidi Bailey. An unmodified opinion was issued on the financial statements of the business-type activities and each major fund. This follows the same opinion granted in previous years, which is the opinion expressed when the auditor concludes that the financial statements are presented fairly in all matters respects in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework. Noted deficiencies include a lack of segregation of duties. This disclosure is due to the limited staff size of the district's business office that does not allow for what would be considered complete oversight over the financial impacts of the district. The finding is identified each year. A compliance finding was noted for overexceeding the budget in the capital outlay fund. This finding was specific to the high school renovation project in which an estimate is identified in terms of progress as the renovation spans over three fiscal budget terms. At fiscal year-end, a supplemental budget to the construction and building function should have been, should have increased to accommodate the full expenditure identified in twenty-twenty-one for the renovations. Adjustments to the financial statements were made to accommodate prior period financials in which there was a predecessor auditor. A few to note include the reporting of the equity interest in Northeast Technical High School in which it was identified as having no explicit measurable interest and therefore is noted to not be included on the fixed assets as equity interest. So, some of these identifications were just changes from one auditor to the other. Lake Area Tech Foundation identified as a component unit versus a special revenue fund, which adjusted the financial reporting within the audit report. Workers' comp previously was coded in arrears and under new direction, the coding was adjusted to expend under the fiscal year in which the expenditure is identified. A new accounting standard was established in FY twenty-one and several adjustments were made to accommodate the new principles as outlined under Gatsby eighty-four. The schedule of federal awards as presented within the audit identifies the district of receiving twenty-one million in federal funding in FY twenty-one. The federal awards tested as major programs were student financial aid, child nutrition cluster, education stabilization funding for both ESAR, which is under K-12, and HRF-related funding for Lake Area Technical College, as well as coronavirus relief funds. A finding was issued under the federal awards specific to the student financial aid cluster and the testing of enrollment reporting, as well as a finding specific to the fiscal operations report and application to participate under the programs of federal work-study, SEOG and federal Perkins. Corrective action plans were issued by the district and Lake Area Tech to correct those findings. Within the audit report is the management's discussion and analysis report, which provides an internal outline of the main financial impacts of the audit report and corresponding financial reports. Additional information included under the management's discussion and analysis include a statement of net position, budgetary highlights of all major funds and information as it relates to capital assets and long-term debt administration. Please note that each board member has received a copy of the audit report. The report is also available in PDF format on the district's website and the Department of Legislative Audit website. Thank you.
Okay, let's first have a motion to approve the audit.
I move approval of the audit as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Iverson. Is there any comments or questions on the audit?
I have a question. Looking at this wonderful pie chart you gave us. I didn't realize this, but state aid for revenue, we're looking at revenue for twenty-twenty-one. State aid is twenty-three percent and then local property taxes and related revenues, another twenty-three percent. So, state aid, local and local taxes, that's about forty-six percent. I just assumed that it'd be much higher, so it's interesting.
Yeah, and actually, in the fiscal year that we're looking at in FY twenty-one, because of our increase in federal funding received under the coronavirus relief funds, that percentage actually went down because of the increase in the federal allocation. But typically, it is around that percentage for the general fund.
I'd like to thank Heidi and Emily for all their work on, with Heidi Bailey on the audit. That is a big job and that being their first year coming through, they had recommendations that were, were good to move ahead. We should be a little less in the findings because we've, they changed some things in, in the way the budget was put together.
Right. Yes, a change in auditors is, you know, a big undertaking when you've been with the same one for thirty-plus years. So, it was, it's been a good change and I think everything will. And I do have to give a special thank you to Emily, my assistant as well. She started this audit while I was out on maternity leave and she did a great job, so thank you to Emily.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the audit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now we'll get to the student enrollment requests, six-point-five-point-one, the open enrollments.
Thanks, we do not have any open enrollments or thirteen-twenty-eight tens this month for your approval.
Then we'll go down to communications and seven-point-one, the administrative reports.
Yeah, thanks, I have a couple of things. One, tomorrow is the Bisco BBQ. That's at eleven-thirty on fourth floor of Lake Area. We're excited to have that. Again, we had a year off a couple of years ago, tried it again last year, but we're back at it full steam with student parts. As well as our speaker is Terry Nebelsek. He is a retired superintendent from Huron and he's going to talk a little leadership and tell a little bit about the Huron story with some of the workforce challenges they had. So, I think should be a good, good speech for our Bisco members and excited to have the students back. Thanks to Carrie Laura, she represents the, the school board on that board. So, we appreciate her, her contributions to that as well as the other Bisco board members. A big thanks to the Activities Office, Mr. Boyens and Tammy Neal in that office. We hosted the North Star Conference Final Four Basketball Tournament here February twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, as well as the state Class B girls' basketball tournament this past weekend. Big events for our community and the, the new scoreboards were a hit. Ryan Remmers has been helping us with that as well as Deb with some of the technology there. So, we appreciate all the efforts to make those two performances that did not actually involve Watertown athletes and participants in it, so I appreciate that. And then for the board members, you received some correspondence from associated school boards about an opening on the ASBSD Board. I did clarify that with Dr. Pogony. The, the enrollment says seven-hundred-to-thirteen-ninety-nine, and you might wonder, that's not us. There were no, nobody nominated or ran for that. So, then that becomes an at-large for the Northeast region. So, Watertown school board members would be eligible for that spot. So, if you're interested, I, now I don't have that letter with me, but there's a deadline on there. And then if you got any other ballot from that, that will be acted upon at the April board meeting, so. But just, I wanted to clarify that because I think there was a question about it to me from one of you about why we got that. So, it's an at-large spot for any Northeast school board member. Mrs. Clausen, did you want to take?
Yes, in terms of the notice of vacancy on the school board, we will have two three-year terms that will be vacant due to the, due to the expiration of the present terms of office for Jean Moulton, her three-year term, and Stuart Stein, three-year term. The circulation of nominating petitions may begin on Thursday, April seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Petitions may be filed in the office of the business manager located in the high school. And those would be due back Friday, May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two at five PM.
If I could just make a quick comment, Tom Brady recently announced that he's got some unfinished business. And I know Dr. Danielson is a big Buccaneer fan. So, it's, it's likely that I'm going to renew my term or try to seek another term. But I, I would actually like to have a conversation with Dr. Danielson before fully committing, but thank you.
And I will commit at this time, I will run again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you both for your service.
Okay, that's all under the administrative reports. Seven-point-two, is there anything for the board to report to the superintendent? Okay, if not, our next item is an executive session for negotiations and personnel issues. Could we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to start executive session.
Motion by Mrs. Laura.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Iverson. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.